This committee, the whole meeting for September 17, 2024, is hereby called to order with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masseakos.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bog.
Here.
Alderwoman Babe.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Mormon.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 3, 2024?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Muhammad?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before we do our presentation tonight, I just wanted to update the council. At 4:00 today, the mayor, police chief, and other members of the police team held a press conference, if you will, in response to Sheriff Ron Haynes' comments last Friday at the unveiling of the statue for the late, the fallen officer K-9 Hudson, where the sheriff made accusations against the police department, the mayor, and so Mayor Irvin and Chief Cross, Deputy Chief Thomas, and Commander Stimmett wanted to set the record straight. And so we did so today at 4:00 PM on YouTube Live, and that was then, will then be pushed out to greater social media presence, just to help set the record straight on what really happened last year and in response to Sheriff Haynes' comments. We just want to make sure the council's aware that you'll be getting the link to the YouTube Live and to subsequent promotions of today's press conference. Okay? Thank you. Today is also, on a more positive note, National IT Professionals Day. Let's give our IT team a round of applause under the leadership of Mike Piggies. If Mayor Irvin can come down, we have an official proclamation. If our IT team can join us down front, let's give them a round of applause as they make their way down. National IT Professionals Day is celebrated on the 3rd Tuesday in September each year. It's a day to recognize and appreciate the hard work and dedication of IT professionals who keep our technology running smoothly, from maintaining networks and systems to ensuring cybersecurity and troubleshooting technical issues. The role of IT professionals is crucial in almost every sector today. Internally, our city IT team leads things from new innovations and technology initiatives to assisting every department with IT issues. Externally, the community, they really work with building digital kiosks and technology at parks to steam education and a future Internet for All plan. I'd like to announce tonight that one of the largest tech magazines, Government CIO Outlook, it has a subscribership of 99,000 people throughout the world. Each year, they select top 10 city government officials, CIO officials, throughout the nation, those who are leading the way, setting the standard. And this year for 2024, one of the top 10 government CIOs in the United States of America is Mike Piggies, the CIO of the City of Aurora. Mayor Irvin.
Well, we appreciate the hard work that Mike Piggies and his team puts in, and it is my honor to read this proclamation. As you can see, the IT team rolls deep here at City Hall, and we appreciate everything they do. So this proclamation is for National IT Professionals Day, Tuesday, September 17, 2024. Whereas the City of Aurora recognizes the integral importance of IT professionals who do the critical but often unseen work to keep our networks and applications running, to enrich the lives of our community members, and to secure our city as desirable place to live, work, play, and visit. And whereas behind every technology stands IT professionals such as technicians and analysts, developers and architects, engineers and administrators, managers and directors, deputy chiefs and chiefs, and others who ensure that technological infrastructure is robust, reliable, and continually evolving to meet the needs of individuals and organizations alike. And whereas IT professionals work tirelessly to troubleshoot issues, implement innovation solutions, and enhance the technological experience of users around the globe. And whereas the City of Aurora's IT department is comprised of 40 professionals who deliver smart solutions and services and provide first-class customer service, all while modernizing the city's technology infrastructure and making Aurora an award-winning and globally-recognized smart city. So therefore, I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, do hereby proclaim the 3rd Tuesday of each September as National Professionals, IT Professionals Day, and celebrate this year on Tuesday, September 17, 2024, so we can recognize the folks that do all the hard work and keep us rolling. Let's give them a round of applause.
And as we prepare for group photo, we'd like to announce that on behalf of the mayor's office, we'll be celebrating the IT professionals with a luncheon as we celebrate them at their convenient schedule in the next week or so. Another round of applause for our IT team. We appreciate you. Mike, do you have a few words from Mr. Piggies?
Yeah, so first of all, I just want to say thanks to the mayor and city council for acknowledging the IT department, and thank you Clayton for the government insider. You know, we are the IT business partner for the departments and the divisions, and without the city, our residents and our visitors, we wouldn't be here. I do want to acknowledge my team because without them, we wouldn't be able to do any of this. Typically, as most people know, that IT people, they like to sit back in the corner and not be very sociable, but you know, someone has to be the mouthpiece for the IT, and I think I do a pretty good job of it. So I like to make sure that they're recognized because a lot of times with IT, you know, you only hear about when things break, the system goes down, you know, some, you know, the network's out, or, you know, we got a problem in the data center of my application, or I have to, you know, do too much, you know, authentication to get into the network. But again, these things are important because as you know, across the world, these cyber attacks are happening all the time, every day, and it's not a matter of if, it's just when it's going to happen. So I want to give a huge acknowledgement to my team for basically doing all the great work that they do and keeping Aurora safe, keeping our systems running, keeping the water on, and keeping everything running smoothly. So give yourself a round of applause.
Congratulations to the IT team. Thank you so much. We look forward to celebrating you at your luncheon soon. Thank you.
One more round of applause for the IT team as they file out. Show them some love.
And as the mayor takes his seat, we would remind everyone that tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at Aurora University, the mayor will be hosting the State of Education address, welcomed addressed by Dr. Susanna Rivera Mills of Aurora University, and Dr. Adrian Tally, the chairman of the Aurora Education Commission, Superintendent of District 204. We look forward to a wonderful night focusing on education in Aurora, celebrating educators and students, so we can still register and come on out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad. All right, let's go on to public comment. Before we start the public comment portion, and I read the rules of public comment, if anyone is here just for the presentations, I want to give you an opportunity to file out. Feel free to stay and participate in the full meeting. However, you know, I know folks are busy and have to get on their way. All right, looks like everybody is here to stay. We appreciate your participation in this meeting. So let's go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Committee reports. Chairwoman Patty Smith, can you give the Building, Zoning, Economic Development Committee report?
The Building, Zoning, Economic Development Committee met on September 11, 2024, and reviewed the following item, 24-0647, a resolution authorizing the approval of the Summer 2024 Historic Preservation Grant and allowing the mayor to enter into the Historic Preservation Grant agreements and addendums. And that was the only item that we had that day for BZNE. Mr. Mayor.
Is there action needed on that item?
Um, yes.
All right. With no objection, this item go on consent?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Lash?
I have no objection to it going on consent, but I did notice that, once again, there's two or three properties of the 14 that are on the east side, and a majority are on the west side, and I'm wondering what we're doing to either do bilingual outreach to the east side historic district or to adjust our committee representation to make sure that we have east side representation on that committee?
We do do bilateral outreach. We send out letters to all homeowners, both bilingual. It's on the website bilingual, and an email goes out bilingual as well. I know I reach out to Alderwoman Garza as well, trying to get a couple of names. I believe she's sent out to some people she knows, but I agree, I would really, I'm trying to work with some of my commission members. I do need another representative from, loved one from the east side, so if someone does know anyone interested, please give them my contact.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I know we pointed out Alderman Garza, and we appreciate her participation in making sure that this information gets out. As far as east side goes, we've got a lot of aldermen on the east side. Now we've got Alderman Barrero, we've got Third Ward, and part of the Fourth Ward goes into the east side as well, as well as Seventh Ward. So let's make sure we get all those aldermen involved so we can get the word out and make sure people participate in this program.
Yes.
Thank you much. All right, that concludes BZNE, Building, Zone, Economic Development. So Chairman Franco, can you give the Finance Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on September 12, 2024, and reviewed the following items. 24-0587, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $51,000 under a grant agreement between the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission in the City of Aurora. This is to provide carbon monoxide sensors to those in need. This grant provides for 75% of the cost with the city to match the rest.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
I'm going to read the next three. 24-0605, a discussion of matters related to the formation and making of a recommendation as to fixing of compensation of elected officials pursuant to the Local Government Officer Compensation Act. 24-0608, a motion and recommendation with respect to mayoral compensation pursuant to the Local Government Officer Compensation Act. And 24-0611, a motion and recommendation with respect to automatic compensation pursuant to the Local Government Officer Compensation Act. Those three I will address again under new business. They've been moved to new business, and I'll go into details at that time.
Okay.
Next one is 24-0627, a resolution to accept the $20,000 advancing economic mobility rapid grant award from the National League of Cities. This grant will help to provide economic mobility for those in need of resources and education.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next one is 24-0630, a resolution to amend an existing contract for a five-year IT service management software to Ivanti of Salt Lake City, Utah, for $129,483.05, and implementation services to Latest Solutions San Francisco, California, for $29,700.
Consent.
With HR and public facilities now onboard, there will be a single system for all three of our major service organizations.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
24-0647, a resolution authorizing approval of the Summer 2024 Historic Preservation Grants along the mayor to enter historic preservation grant agreements and addendums. This was already addressed in the BZE report.
Information only.
24-0650, a resolution authorizing director purchasing to purchase video conferencing hardware and services for Aurora Branch Courtroom 2 from Burrwood Group Incorporated, Chicago, Illinois, for a total amount not to exceed $123,972.10.
Consent.
Courtroom 2 has no video conferencing capabilities, which leads to numerous inefficiencies.
No, I'm sorry, Alderman Lash.
I don't think I have a problem with this going on consent, but I did, I watched a Finance Committee meeting, and one question I had while watching that was, what kind of hearings are these? Are these administrative hearings that are happening here, or are these circuit court hearings?
Administrative.
Thank you.
All right, so no objections, I'm going to consent.
Okay. 24-0661, a resolution authorizing the mayor to reserve and appropriate funds for the proposed Eola Road Autumn Grove Circle to Obasi Creek Trail Multi-Use Path Project, a shortlisted project for ITEP grant 2024 cycle 16. This is an 80/20 split for non-right-of-way expenses for walking bike paths, sidewalks, drainage, and other enhancements. Total cost is $3.75 million.
Consent.
Alderman Lash, unfinished?
No, I'm happy actually putting this on consent, but I did have a few questions.
Do you have questions?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
So first of all, thank you and the staff for digging in and getting this, something moving on this intersection that a lot of residents have complained about, but what kind of barrier along this multi-use path will be between the path and traffic to protect students and pedestrians and bikers from potential automobile accidents?
Ken Troth, Director of Public Works, City Engineer, good question. That'll come out in the Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering. There's multiple ways to make that happen. Sometimes it's distance between the through lane and the park and the bike path or the sidewalk. Other times, it's a physical concrete barrier. Our choice always is to try and give it distance, but if there's geometric reasons to prevent that from happening, then we end up going with a physical barrier. So that'll all be laid out as we go through Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering.
But the plan is to have a barrier of some sort?
Whether it's distance or a physical barrier, one of the two. You can meet the requirements of the Federal Department of Transportation by doing either of the two.
Okay, and what's a distance then to meet that federal requirement?
I believe it varies by speed.
Okay. And then I know that residents, just south of 34 on the Eola section there, there's a section where residents have been advocating for a crosswalk and flashing lights similar to what we have at the Illinois, the Prisco Center. I'm curious if there's any consideration for that, because that's a place where the kids come across and then go right into that subdivision and from McDonald's or Starbucks.
Yeah, not at this time. We've met with several of the residents in the area and the alderwoman, and basically, we don't want to encourage anyone to use what we would consider kind of a mid-block crossing right there. We'd rather have them utilize the proper crossings that we have already at the major intersections.
Okay.
Follow-up on that. You said, Ken, that you would prefer that no one use that location. Are we going to put up signs that says, "Do not use that location"?
There's been talk about that, working with the school district on that, but quite frankly, yeah, there'd be so many signs. Once you go down that path, literally, there'd be signs everywhere. You know, kids many times don't pay attention to the proper.
Currently, it's jaywalking currently, so people are disobeying it, and they're using it anyway, and it's a high-traffic area with kids walking. So, and then I guess that, is there any, are we going to do anything at that intersection, like an all-way stop to, when people are actually crossing? Because having the protected path is nice, but we need to do something to control the intersection. I don't know what's been discussed with that, or if that'll be part of this project.
It wouldn't be part of this project. That would have to be something separate.
Okay, I've got one other question on the next agenda item. I can ask it now, or?
With no objections, I'm going to consent.
Yeah, I have.
Alderman Smith?
Just, everything that was just discussed, I have talked to the engineering department over my six years of here at Nausea. We have done everything we can to make sure those Labanzi students are safe as we can possibly make them be. We can't make them follow the law. We can't do certain things on Agden, but this isn't a new issue. It's a problem that's been ongoing, so it's not something. I appreciate your concerns, John, being the new alderman, but this is something that we have been addressing for quite some time.
Thank you. No objections, I'm going to consent.
All right, next one is 24-0662, a resolution authorizing the mayor to reserve and appropriate funds for the proposed Agden Avenue, Montgomery Road to Southern DuPage Regional Trail Multi-Use Path Project, a shortlisted project for ITEP grant 2024 cycle 16. This is similar to the last one with a total cost of $3.6 million.
Consent.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just can't tell if the red line goes on the southern side or the northern side, and what's involved with respect to right-of-way easements and that.
That will also come out in the Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering. If we are awarded the grant, the next step would, for both of us, would be to come forward with a Phase 1 engineering agreement that the council would approve. During that Phase 1 design, that's when we would decide what was best, what location would be best to have the bike path, which side would be best to have the sidewalk. So the idea with this exhibit was to just show the project limits, but not show the be specific about which side the bike path should be on. That will come out later.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next one is 24-0681, a resolution amending an existing agreement with Grandicus, excuse me, Denver, Colorado, to add a service request management system, and annual cost is $68,292.24.
Consent.
Plus a one-time implementation fee of $65,565.96. The SRM service will improve service and response times for residents.
No objections, I'm going, I'm sorry, Alderman Lash.
Just a quick question. Do we have an anticipated launch date for the new website? It's been like a multi-year project, I think.
Good evening. Tony Martinez, Chief Communication and Marketing Officer. Yes, we have a kind of rollout date of the end of February for our website launch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next item is 24-0692, a resolution approving a third amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the City of Aurora and Illinois Municipal Corporation and DAC Development LLC.
Consent.
Consent. I have a question.
I'm sorry.
If there's going to be discussion on this, I'm going to recuse myself, go unfinished. I recused myself since the beginning of all the development agreements with this project.
All right, so there's, so all right, there is going to be discussion on this, so Alderman Masseakos will recuse himself. We'll allow him to leave the council chambers as we engage in conversation. However, this, based on his recusal, this will go on unfinished.
So we're going to wait for, is Mr. Devo going to come and give a presentation? So we're going to wait for, is Mr. Devo going to come and give a presentation?
Mayor's Office of Economic Development.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. So this is the item, the DAC Development 24 dash zero six nine two, a resolution approving a third amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the City of Aurora and Illinois Municipal Corporation and DAC Development LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody. David Devo here, Mayor's Office of Economic Development. As the mayor just mentioned, this is the resolution authorizing a third amendment to the redevelopment agreement with DAC Development for 100 North Broadway. So I just want to start by, you know, obviously, tonight represents a historic opportunity. Just as a perspective, the DAC development at 258 units is more than three times River Street Plaza, more than twice. All the deals that have been approved downtown, this size of this building is more than twice all those buildings together. So it is a, kind of a monumental moment. But that said, I want to stress in the beginning just how similar this is to a lot of the things that we've done here at City Council, starting with our plans. And we're going to show a little slide on the next slide about how we've been speaking about developing on the waterfront for the longest time. We've looked at studies going back to 1984, and this exact vision of building on the riverfront, building an apartment on the riverfront, has been a long time coming. Again, that said, this is very consistent with what we've done in previous projects. We've always talked about the gap. Why do we do this? It's the same methodology that we had here. The cost of the project is greater than the ultimate value of the project, and in order to get this deal done, you've got to close the gap, and we've talked about that a long time over the years. It's interesting when you talk about this project, because there's comparisons to Copley and Bloomhaven. They're both about 300,000 square feet, give or take, 340,000 square feet, to be specific. And they both, the incentive on both deals were in the $12 million range. And so by definition, it's a similar amount per square foot that we've done in a lot of these other projects. And if you look at what we're giving here, or what we're suggesting that we offer per unit, it's also very similar to, for instance, what was done at Hobbs and so on. So again, very unique in one way, but very similar to a lot of the things we've done before. If we go to the next slide, it's just a little graphic showing, we pulled some of the old plans going back to 1984. These were the covers. And always, we talked about the vibrant riverfront, enhanced economy, and places of recreation, and this has it all. The next slide, we actually pulled some slides going back to 2007. I actually knew the developer, Bud Cataldo, who'd come here, tried to do this development, and did not happen at that time. We keep going. Riverfront development throughout the country has been just what's been happening. If you look all over the Midwest and, of course, the East Coast, a lot of developments. We've given some examples here in Kansas City, in Pittsburgh, St. Charles, Missouri. Familiar with a couple of these projects in New York on the Hudson River. I worked on a project many, many years ago, early in my career, suggesting a riverfront development in Washington, D.C., on the Anacostia River that flows into the Potomac River. That project's finally been built. So a lot of discussion over the years, all over the country, and it is time, I think, for Aurora to step up and develop on its riverfront. Let me just give you some highlights of the development agreement, and then we can get into some details. We're asking for an increase of the participation from the city from a previously approved $6.8 million to $12.590, and that's an increase of $5,750,000. This additional funding results mostly from unanticipated environmental and soil issues, which we will discuss in detail, and what I would call the new normal of higher construction costs. We go through, when the original RDA was approved in '21, a couple amendments, but I will say that construction is underway, and the grand opening is scheduled for the spring of 2026. The next slide simply goes through what's happened nationally since 2020 in terms of the inflation that's happened and hit the construction business very, very hard, an average of 20% to 25% increased cost, which is very in line, very much in line with what we're experiencing here. Kent Roeth, over in engineering, they use their own metrics, very similar metrics nationally when they do their contracting, in terms of what's been going on. So I thought the next slide was interesting. What's the ramifications? What happens when this kind of issues happen, these kind of issues happen in an economy? Well, many projects get terminated. There's many projects in the western suburbs who have just stopped. Loans, and we have this experience here, are much more expensive, and it's much harder to qualify. Loans ratios are decreased. You're going to see in these numbers how the actual amount of money that the lenders were willing to do have actually decreased, even though the costs have increased. We will look at that. As I said, many lenders were retreated from the market. We have record-high construction costs derived from higher labor costs, cost of materials, inflation. So the net result is the city has been unable to meet its demand that we predicted in the original housing study that was done about five years ago. About 250 units per year were falling behind, and yet the demand for housing and apartment housing continues unabated. So just to summarize where we are right now, the project is underway. Approximately $8 million has already been spent by the developer. I know a lot of people have driven by, we had a video, a drone video, that we showed at the Finance Committee. At this point, all third-party financing is now in place. That's about $75 million, and the approval of this resolution will help get us to the final dollars for the capital stack. So what I want to do now is just introduce the developer, Danny Resco, to speak briefly about who he is and some of his projects, and then we're going to go into some of these cost increases, and specifically what happened as they began digging in the soils. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Danny.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All the men, all the women, all the persons, thank you. Just wanted to introduce myself to some of you for the first time and reintroduce myself to some of you I met before. My name is Daniel Resco. I'm the founder and president of DAC Developments LLC. We're a Chicago-based Class A apartment development company. This is our team. I won't bore you with all of these friendly faces. Feel free to read about them in your free time. But started the firm 12 years ago, and to date, we've done about half a billion dollars in new construction development, all in the greater Chicagoland area. These are just a couple of our recently completed buildings I thought were worth highlighting. Let's start from the right. So that's Uptown 500, it's a 321-unit development deal we did in downtown Wheeling. We started construction on that in 2018. $120 a foot in hard construction cost back then. The one on the left, Downtown Displanes, 212-unit development. By the way, we developed these buildings, and we still own them today. The one on the left, Downtown Displanes, it's called Welkin Apartments, 212-unit apartment building, and built that at $140 a foot. The one in the middle is Downtown Chicago. It's called the 808. It's at the southern tip of, well, used to be Cabrini-Green, a public housing project back in the day that has since been demoed. And what's common about all three of these projects, and what shares with this project that we've started at 100 North Broadway, is that we worked with the local municipalities in each case, Wheeling, Displain, City of Chicago, to reimagine a blighted area, an area that may have had environmental issues, an area that was undevelopable, et cetera, and created housing in areas that needed housing. These buildings are all full. We completed these buildings on time. We completed these buildings on budget, and the local municipalities in each case have been cooperative and, you know, beneficiaries, we believe. So just a little bit about us. And that brings us to the project that we've started. Again, first day of construction was May 20th, so we're just about four months in. Brian is the senior project manager at ENC Construction. They're the general contractor, and he'll talk you through some of the issues that were found on site and kind of give you some of that history. But just real quick, 258 units is what we're building here. It's a mix of studios, ones, twos, and a couple of three bedrooms. It's an $87 million project in total. As Mr. Devo mentioned, we've started, we're about $8 million into that. Almost all of that is our money. And there you see some renderings, about 340,000 square feet. So we're excited, extremely proud to, you know, help bring mayor's vision to life in an area that, you know, we think desperately needs housing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Yeah, let's get our team up here, too. The city team and Brian, your team. Let's get everybody up here. We're just going to talk, I'm just going to introduce this next section of the presentation. We're going to try to move relatively quickly. But most of the additional incentive that we are requesting is solely based on what was found when the digging begun. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I don't know, Brian and our team.
I screwed that up. I'm sorry.
I'm Josh Ream, Director of Development Services for the City of Aurora. For any of you who don't know, so what we're dealing with at 100 North Broadway is an area that's been basically industrial or a parking lot for the last 160 years. A lot of the buildings are originally on-site, date back to some of the 1880s and then early 1900s. We've got, in the picture here, you can see the American Wellworks, which is a larger grouping of buildings in the back, and then also the lumber manufacturer that's right at the end of where Spring Street kind of dives into Broadway there. And so also, there's the old commuter rail track that was right on the front, like right at the edge of the river. So just to give you a context there. In the next slide here, you're going to see from top-left, the 1888, then 1907, 1950, and then eventual 1988, final layout of the whole site. You're going to see that there's a, for the most part, a major structural development, like right in the middle of the site. And then in the, by 1907, we get the very long building that was part of the American Wellworks all along Broadway, and we've now run a rail line into the middle of the site. And then the area to the north, to the west, then, up on the drawing, kind of maintains there. And by the 1950s, we've got an even larger site as that business continues to expand over that 40-year period. And then 88 is about the last time there were any buildings on the actual site, as that building had been out for a while. So just to give you a context of everything that's on there, as part of DAC's development and what we researched as part of our building approval process and the agreement is typical soil borings on-site. They did seven overall borings, and it's usually typical, a lot around the perimeter, and then some interior. In this case, almost all of them came back fairly clean, some soils issues like that, nothing that would be overly alarming, except for maybe one had some bricks and stuff in it. And what you can see here is like ones in the middle happened to hit where we never really had buildings. We had rail there the whole time or no built structure. And then once you do ones around the perimeter, it's better kind of taken down and everything like that. So just an idea and context of what we're dealing with there. So, I mean, sorry, it goes quick. So there's like a back view of the buildings or anything that all went down, the tower in the background. You can see that there's no riverbank or anything really to speak of at the time it was taken down. There was also one more here. We'll see if we can get to, for context. So what we found in sight is, and there'll be, this is the last demolition permit that was completed in 1990, is a significant amount of debris buried 20, 30 feet below grade, where we've had floors of the buildings open and debris put in there. This could have been from any of those periods of time. So we're talking buildings that have been demolished from the turn of the 19th, 20th century, all the way through 50s and 80s, as we see the change in construction. And then when we get to the point of the 1990s, final demolition, the site was just being used as a parking lot. So there wasn't really this need or forethought of what's going on any further below than where we're kind of at. And standards at the time are not like you see, like what we're doing with the Y MCA building right now, where you get full excavation remedial of soil, we're going to bring in additional fill, recompact it, grate it out. That just wasn't the process on something like this over that whole time period the building is. So things, just layers of history, keep getting buried, and with the normal depth of soil borings, the configuration, a lot of what we're going to see in these upcoming slides, from tunnels to cavities and voids, excessive concrete that was used, they just weren't probably going to discover without extensive work beyond what would be a normal application at the beginning of a building process. And I think that kind of covers everything else. So Brian's going to start getting into a little bit of what was found on site and kind of the construction analysis to wrap that portion up.
Yes, my name's Brian Goss. I'm with ENC Construction and Development, project manager. We started, like Danny said, May 20th, and ever since May 20th, we've basically just been finding new stuff in the ground. We actually just poured our first set of concrete here Monday this week, so we've gotten through a substantial amount of it, but almost four months has been spent just going through the entire history of the site. So like that was mentioned, we did do seven borings before beginning construction that kind of set the stage for what the expectation of a structural design would be. And then we actually got out there and started digging. And essentially, throughout the whole history of the site, as they demoed, they demoed the buildings in and then just built on top. So as we were digging up, I don't know if we can go to the next slide and into some of the photos, we just kept digging all the way up to depths of 25 feet. So even when we thought we were done with another building, we would continue to keep digging and find even more buildings, some up to four feet thick. It appears back in the day, they used what they had on site, which was a lot of river rock, large stones, and they didn't do that much structural analysis, so they just poured things big. So we had four-foot-thick slabs. As you can see in some of these photos, there were numerous tunnels, brick tunnels, all over the site, largely which we believe used steam to heat neighboring buildings. The one in the top middle actually extends further to the north outside of our site. But the top right photo kind of speaks for itself. That's a, I don't know, 25-foot-tall excavator, reaching as far deep as it can go, 25 feet, and still finding bricks, tunnels, concrete. So we spent the last three and a half months chipping out, hauling out concrete, hundreds of trucks, thousands of cubic yards. We essentially lowered the site almost three feet across, just in the stuff that we had to remove. In addition to that, some of the borings that we discovered had some small contamination, and according to IUPA standards, it required us to haul it to a special facility. We were going to haul to a local facility that's only a couple of miles away, but in turn, we had to, actually, the closest facility was Rochelle, which was 43 miles, and that just round trip per truck, you can just imagine the cost that are associated with that. So here we get into some of the construction changes. The cast-in-place concrete, originally the plan for the structural design was going to be shallow foundations, spread footings. Turns out, the soil that we've encountered was much more sandy, so we had to change the entire structure to 143 auger cast grout piles that were dug 30 feet down to bedrock. In combination of that, we also had to add a bunch of grade beams that span in between the 143 columns down to bedrock. Some of these grade beams are up to four feet by four feet, some of which we just poured earlier this week on Monday, which increased costs significantly. Not only that, for excavation, for spoil removal, it's for concrete, almost doubled the amount of rebar that we've used on site. So it's been a challenge, to say the least. And then resulting financial impact, as we've gone through all these challenges over the last four months, construction costs have grown, the amount of haul-off has grown, and Danny, would you speak to this one?
Yeah, sure. Just to put a bow on it, basically, the additional cost between the underground obstructions, the environmental issues, comes out to $4 million, $60,000 that the city reviewed and approved in their memo, and that's, that's what we're talking about.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, and we could, when we open it up, we could, if there's any more questions. But I, we did, we didn't want to spend too much time on that, but it's such a significant number, we thought it warranted it, so thank you for your patience there. So let's, let's keep going, Alex. Okay, so what are we doing? I just want to summarize again. So we're changing some milestones in terms of the timing of the project, which was discussed in the RDA, and we're addressing the associated cost increases. The next slide talks about the costs of the project have gone from about 68 and a half million dollars to almost 87 million dollars, and the timing has gone from October 31st, when we thought we were going to be up and going, to now the spring of '26. These next two slides, I think, really should tell the story. The original deal of 68 and a half million dollars, now up to 86, almost 87 million dollars. And what we did is, in tan, these were all the liabilities that really fall on the developer. So originally, it was the, they were going to put in 10 plus the 51 in financing, and now their financing is now bifurcated, and I don't want to get too far into it, but you could see, we talked in the earlier slide about what happened with the lenders and the ratios. So instead of lending $51 million on a 68 million dollar deal, the first lender felt comfortable lending $45 million on an 86 million dollar deal. And that's the kind of thing that's going on in the market and has caused, Danny had to go out and get a second, much more expensive second loan and so on, and of course, increase his equity from about 10 to 13 and a half. Let's go to the next slide. The next slide, I think, is a punchline. So there's another 18 and a half million dollars, give or take, of additional costs, 12 and a half million dollars roughly coming on Danny's side of the table. On our side of the table, we've got the aforementioned $4 million in all the additional infrastructure, environmental work that had to be done, plus another $1,007,000, and that really does relate more to the increased cost. So the, and I don't want to say this, you know, but the only amount that we're giving as a result purely of the increased cost, the increased cost of over 20, 25%, is about 9% of the total amount, this $1,007,000, you know. So we've bifurcated that $5.7 million request between the $4 million, which whether it was Danny, or us, or anybody, it was going to have to be spent, and that's why we included it that way. And the only tag on that, the additional, is that $1,007,000. This next slide, I don't want to go into detail, but we have some mechanisms where if Danny does better and his equity does a lot better than what they thought, then we've got a shot at getting some of that $1,007,000 back, because again, we bifurcated that number, and that was more of a pure grant based on the cost increases, as opposed to the other things, which as I said, everybody would have to deal with. I want to close, before we open it up, to discussion is, we always look at the return on investment to the community, and it's interesting, over the past decade, many, there's been a lot of research done about how to quantify this. I will say that when I was in college, I had the honor of working with a gentleman who's, who really was one of the founders of what they call the input-output tables, and that's just a way, it's a fancy way of saying, how do you figure these multipliers in terms of, how do you measure the impact on a community in putting 258 units? A study that was done by the National Housing Council and the National Apartment Council, I have a copy of it, which I'm going to include in, for next week, so you have it if anybody kind of want to geek out, like I did, to look at these things. It's actually fascinating. But, you know, some of the highlights are renters spend more money, more of their income locally than homeowners, 75% of disposable income is spent on consumer goods, and 70% of these dollars stay within the local economy. So how do we measure this investment for the city? So it's about 12 and a half, 12.6 million dollars. The initial measures would be qualitative, you know, you're going to, it's going to be a much more improved site, the surrounding properties are going to go up in value, there's going to be new private investment, the quality of life is going to increase, safety, aesthetics, riverfront access, there's going to be increased short-term jobs, long-term jobs, and increased local business. We try to quantify that, again, using some of the metrics that we found over here. The easy ones are the property taxes. The property taxes should go from $10,000 now to probably something closer to $1 million. The original agreement had the city getting 10% of that, which is roughly $100,000 a year. If you go to the next slide, the school and park districts stand to earn about $660,000. The permit fees that the city will earn at about $520,000. Again, using the metrics that we found here, we think that the residents are going to generate about $125,000 in sales taxes, based on the spending that they are going to be doing annually. So if you add that 125 and the 100, that's already about $250,000, $250,000 a year. And then again, based on these multipliers, maybe another $20 million generated in the local economy or 258 units, and that's about $875,000 a year over, let's say, the 23 years of the TIF, or you could do 27 years, which is a typical depreciated life of the building. That's not including the construction jobs, 374 construction jobs, 155 maintenance jobs, and supported other developments. So that's the general metrics here. I think that's it. I want to thank everybody, the mayor, Alex Alexandro, Trevor, Alex, all, the whole team of engineering, planning, everybody who's worked so hard over five years to bring us to this day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll go ahead and take questions from y'all, and before we do, I want to give Finance Committee Chair Franco the opportunity to speak. Why did this pass out of finance? The good reasons.
Well, it passed out of finance because it's an economic engine.
Is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not. It's an economic engine. You know, our goal in downtown is to bring more residents down there to increase economic activity. This is, as Mr. Debo said, the big one, you know, compared to everything else, it's twice as much as we've done down there. So bringing all that synergy in for our bars, our restaurants, our local residents will create, as you said, more wealth, more growth, and it's part of the piece of the puzzle that we have going in downtown, where we're talking about, and I remember this like four years ago, when they came in, 1,200 more units are coming down there, it's going to be great. This is the major piece of the puzzle. And when this goes in, then across the, on the other side of the river, that development will start to take off, because knowing this will be successful, knowing what their rents will be, that makes that more attractive. So it's just one thing after another, a snowball rolling down a hill for economic development.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yes, I had a question. I wanted to follow up on your point about the 10% of the TIF coming back to the city. I just wanted clarification on that. Do you mean coming back to the taxing bodies, or, I was just trying to understand how that was structured?
No, for the city's investment of the, so we bifurcated that amount, the $1,690. So we said the 5.75 million was bifurcated between the $4 million, give or take, for the foundation and the environmental, and the $1,007. So based on the $1,007, we have some formulas where we could possibly get that, you know, some of that money back, depending on how the project does.
Mr. Minnick, you want to, you want to add to that?
Thank you, Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Alderman Barrero, whenever we advance funds into a TIF and utilize a forgivable loan, those funds are tracked, or those amounts, I should say, are tracked, so that, to the extent that there is increment to repay the city for its investment in those, in those items directly, in those advances, and in those advanced costs that are paid upfront, that we are able to then recover those costs under the TIF law and in accordance with the redevelopment agreement.
The next agenda item has, involves a TIF, and I think in that one, they had some revenue sharing, I think, so I just wanted to see if there was a similar thing or not, that's all.
This was the original deal that was done four and a half years ago. We did a different deal, again, based on the economics of that second deal, which was a more affordable project. We'll talk about that.
Any other questions or comments from the right, left, Alderman, Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Warman, I'm sorry.
A couple of quick questions. So we're done going down, we're just going up now, so there's going to be no more surprises as far as finding anything, so we're going up, correct? Nice, that's a good thing, yes. And then financing's in place, there's no other hurdles or anything like that, so this is that last piece, so to speak, that'll see this project through fruition then, correct?
Correct, Alderman. And Mr. Debo and others from the city have been very involved in, you know, meeting the various stakeholders, the various capital providers.
Great, thank you. That's all, there.
Start with Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the Finance Committee meeting, you had said that you, your initial lender had you at 8%, and then you went, they pulled back a little bit, how much they wanted to finance this project, and then you had to find a second lender at 14%. I guess I'm wondering why the bank pulled back. To me, that's a little bit of a red flag, as they are looking after their assets, but perhaps there's a rational explanation for that.
Yeah, it's more of a, it's a good question.
Is that microphone on?
Can you hear me?
You can pull it up, pull it up to you, pull it up to you.
Hello?
There you go.
Good? It's a good question, Alderman. It's something that Dave touched on, which is just that the capital markets environment has pulled back significantly in the last couple of years. Folks, banks that were lending 70% of cost are down to 60%, 60% down to 50%, et cetera. So it's a result of that. And yes, they are charging prime rate, which today's 8.5%, the senior lenders.
So it's the same lender that originally was on board on the 51, but again, their lending parameters changed, so it wasn't like they, they weren't happy with the project, but again, there, I did work at a bank at some point, and when those parameters changed and the metrics changed, they changed, but they stayed with it for these four years.
And then the other big thing that I have is, I mean, the narrative here is that, well, we discovered all this unexpected costs on our ground, but during the Finance Committee meeting, pretty much everybody said, well, anytime we are going to develop along the river, we're going to run into pollution and environmental and old construction. So on one hand, we're saying, we knew all this existed, and on the other hand, we're saying, oh, what a surprise. I guess I'm, you know, I'm challenging the narrative a little bit, because there's talk about development up and down the river, and somehow, I don't, I don't think we can continue to make this argument and pretend we didn't know.
Well, I'm going to take some of it, maybe Danny, you could take the other. So as, one of the slides, we could pull it back up, showed that there was an allocation for this environmental foundation-related issues, you know, a million five or so. So that was with the budget. And think about it, why would we come to council, get an RDA approved, get a 68 million, get it approved, if we thought the number was higher? It just wouldn't make sense. So that was the number, that was the budget, that's what everybody kind of signed off on, and then when they dug, it was different. I will say that if you step back, what's happening here on the river is not that different than what happens when you look at these old buildings. If you don't touch a building for 50 years, and then you go in and you say, maybe I'll just fix it up, you realize the magnitude of work, and that's why we've had to come to you very often, because it's not just fixing a wall or something, it's sometimes like Hobbes, it's, it's almost recreating the whole building. And it's the same thing here. And that's why I mentioned about these other cities that have been doing this work on the river for years. So they found their environmental issues in the 80s and the 90s and the early 2000s, we're finding them now. It's not that it's a shock, it's just, I think, the magnitude of the idea that you're building a building, or you have a building, and then you just bury it underneath the ground. I mean, we just don't think that way anymore, because that's not permitted anymore, but that's the way it was. But that, that's not a narrative, that's what happened. And why don't you just?
Yeah, I think you said it well, Dave, but, I mean, the other thing is, no matter how much testing you do, you really don't know until you start digging. And we did all the soil borings that we could, we voluntarily went into the Illinois EPA remediation program, which is the most stringent, you know, program really, and did all the borings, and then you model out, based on the borings, what you think the environmental impact will be, and that becomes the budget. But then once you start digging, and you mobilize, and you start digging around, and you, you know, you've got your construction engineer there with the sniffer, you know, and, oh, that's no good, take it to the special fill. Nope, that's no good, take it to the special fill. You just, you never know until you start digging. And then, you know, you get into the obstructions that, you know, also evaded the borings too, so the tunnels and.
I think, I think just for moving it along, I'll probably maybe reach out to you offline between now and the council for some of the more details on some of those issues.
Be happy to. And I just, you know, there's a building on Broadway that we were talking to a restaurant about, and they've concluded that it's cheaper to knock down the building and build again than to renovate the building.
Generally, that's the case.
But I mean, that's the kind of things that we're seeing, where you, you just, when they went in, they did, they wanted to renovate the building, but when they started to do the math, as the same thing that's happening here, when you do the cost, you get the architects, you do the schematic plans, you see what's going on.
And then just, I guess, in general, do we see you guys coming back? Because you said, you compared this to Copley, and the trend there was keep coming back for more money from the, from the council. Do you see us coming back in the future?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Smith?
You guys answered almost all the questions that I had, but what I do want to say, it's nice to see you again, Danny. I believe we went through this the first time, did I see May 2021? And you guys started May 2024? Welcome back. Where have you been?
Thank you.
I also wanted to add, from a real estate perspective, it's been difficult getting people to buy homes, because money is hard to get from banks right now. So even when you melt it down to our homes, it's the same type of situation that you guys were going through when you're talking about banks and financing with banks. So it's not just your industry, it's the, the home industry as well. So as Alderman Franco said, we need this type of building in our city. We can't get to where we want to go as a city without more people living down here, and that's why I said, where have you been? Because I wanted these people here three years ago. So very excited that you guys are starting to put up some concrete, we're moving forward, get some people living down here, and we're going to see our dreams for Aurora start to, to expand even wider than they already are. So good to see you guys here.
Thank you, Alderman. And despite all the challenges, we're extremely excited to bring this project to downtown. And, you know, we plan on being here for a long time, and we appreciate having you all as partners. Hopefully, it's not the last one, it's the first one, and we'll keep on developing from there. Thank you.
Alderman Bate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask, can you please go over why there was a delay in starting this project?
Happy to. Really just a result similar to the question I answered earlier, a result of the financial markets. Bank financing, interest rates going up, banks pulling back the amount of money that they're willing to lend. These are very capital-intensive projects, and they require multiple funding sources, and you kind of need to line everything up and for it to work. And we got it now, we're, we've obviously started, but that's, hopefully that answers your question.
How much is the change in the rent? Originally, what you had planned, and now, is there a change in the structure of renting the apartments?
Yeah, so one thing that has happened in the industry is that rents have gone up. So I, I believe when we first went in in 2021, don't quote me on this, but I believe it was right around $2 a foot in rents, and we're now projecting $2.65 a foot in rents. This would be kind of a record for downtown Aurora. I think that, you know, it's probably 20% higher than what Aurora is experiencing right now, so.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question for Dave. Since it's so close to river, is this property eligible for any kind of grants? Hazard to environment grant?
We weren't familiar. We have our grant writer who always looks at those things, so we didn't see anything specific, you know, for that, in terms of other grants. I mean, we could continue to look to see if there's anything now that we've, you know, found everything in the last couple of months, but we, we were not aware of any grants.
Okay, and I saw one amount of $5,995,511. Could you go over that slide again? I missed writing down what was that for.
Let's see, which one is that? On the, on this chart, or the, one of these?
I think it was this presentation, but maybe a couple of slides.
These numbers are just, I think, just go through it, you just tell us when it stops.
It was like a text.
Maybe more in the beginning? Oh, is that, there it is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Can you please share this with us?
I, I can take this, Dave.
Oh, yeah, good.
It's just the difference between the, it's the new cost for this type of work, this environmental and foundation work. So previously, it was the $1,009,000, and then the additional cost of the $4 million, and now you get to $5,900,000.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So that, that was the, but Alderman Lacy's question. So they thought it was two million and it was closer to six million. And that's the four million differential.
Any other questions, Alden Tolliver?
More of a comment. So when we had this original discussion in the finance meeting, it was this development and the next agenda item that we went and talked about in a lot of detail, so to speak. So just to kind of piggyback off of what was kind of said by some of the council members already, in regards to, being a construction underwriter, in regards to the excavation, the remediation process of the soil, this is like excavation nightmare, so to speak. Maybe somewhat expected. So one of the comments that was made is that, you know, pretending that we didn't know that it was going to be there, it's not a matter of pretending that we don't know it's going to be there, we know it's there. It's just a matter of how much we're going to find once we do it. There's no way to predict how much is going to be down there until we actually get down there with the boring and the things like that that were mentioned already. Another thing as far as the industry goes with the, the bank loans, that's something that I see literally every day in the construction industry. I look at work in progress from all the different accounts that I have, and the costs are going up, they have been for the last two, three years, and I don't see anything changing with that anytime recent. So just to kind of add some context to some of the things that we already talked about. And I think most important is that regardless of who's doing this project, these costs were going to have to be expended anyway, whether it was the city paying for it, somebody else doing it. Anytime that we do anything on this river, we just know that that's going to happen. We're, there's going to be a cost because of the things that weren't taken care of a hundred years ago, fifty years ago, whatever the case may be. Finding tunnels underground, that's outrageous. So it's like, this is just stuff that's going to happen. And I don't think we can pick and choose that we're going to take care of it for some developments that we find on the river, like closed sessions we've had in the past, and then, or things that are open like this. We have to be consistent about it. If we're going to do it for one, we have to do it for all. And just expect that to happen anytime we're doing any kind of development on the river itself. So that's my two cents.
All right, well, I thank you much. I'll close us out and we'll, you know, put this on, on unfinished. The reality is this, and then Dave Debo, you gave an example of a fifty-year-old project or house or building that you go in and you want to redevelop it or fix it up, and you realize that it's going to cost a whole heck of a lot more than you thought. Because it's fifty years old and you don't really know all that's there. These aren't fifty-year-old pieces of property we're looking at that had things on them. These are a hundred and fifty-year-old pieces of property that, that had development on it. And not just one, layers after layers after layers over decades and generations. So, you know, as, as pointed out by Alderman Tolliver, who was part of the conversation in the finance committee. You know, the reality is, you know, we don't know what we're going to see when we open up the ground along our riverfront. Unfortunately, you know, our forefathers thought it was, you know, valuable to use our riverfront, you know, for all of our factories and to carry, and to use the river to carry out pollutants. And, you know, over the years, as we become smarter and more aware of the value of, of our riverfront, we're now starting to clean it up and wanting to utilize it. But, but running into the problem that it was disregarded and violated for so many decades and generations. The last time we did any development on our riverfront was twenty years ago. And that was just a few apartments on the south portion at River Street condos, you know. And, and that person that built that isn't here with us anymore to tell us about the problems that existed. As a matter of fact, the only person I believe that was on the council at that time was, was Alderman Seville, who could probably give you a little background on some of the issues that we, that we had to deal with, as well as the issues we had to deal with getting the riverfront, the riverwalk, you know, built up around there. And before that, we hadn't seen anything else built, man, in probably ninety to a hundred years, you know, on our, on our downtown, in our downtown, on our riverfront. The simple fact is, we know that if we want any type of development in our downtown, this is a city of Aurora, in our downtown, we are going to have to make an investment. It's an investment in ourselves. And how do we expect a developer to come in and spend tens of millions of dollars, almost a hundred million dollars, investing in the city of Aurora? And we're not willing to put skin in the game and invest in ourselves? That don't make any sense. That makes absolutely no sense. So yes, as pointed out, we're going to have issues as we develop up and down the river. And yes, we're going to have to talk about, talk to each developer about what we're willing to do to invest, to make sure that we can get this development up and running and get people living downtown and finally clean up this riverfront that hasn't been cleaned up for a hundred years. It's our responsibility as, as a city. And, and we can't speak for the city fathers in years and decades past, but we can speak for who we are and what we're doing today. And today, we're trying to make a difference. And today, we need to be a part of the game. We need to have skin in the game. We need to partner with our developers to make sure that we can do what's necessary to move our city forward. Because what is the option? That we do nothing? Because that's what's happened ten years ago, and ten years before that, and ten years before that, and a hundred years before that, we've done nothing. And it shows. We're not going to continue to do nothing. So this is going to go on unfinished, but, you know, I, I implore all our aldermen, that ones that still have outstanding questions, to ask those questions because we have the answers. And to next week, when we get to that point, to vote to make sure we can move Aurora forward. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you next week at the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
That clues that item, why don't you call that the next item?
All right, so we need, all right.
All right, we're bringing all, let the record reflect that our messiaco is coming in, and we, and this next item, Alderman Warman is going to be recusing himself, and he's going to be leaving the city council chamber. So let's wait till Alderman Warman leaves so we can start this discussion on the next item.
All right, next item on the agenda is two four dash zero six nine three, a resolution approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Aurora and the Barrera Organization LLC for the renovation of the property located at one sixteen West Galena Boulevard, Aurora, Illinois.
Well, let's go with that presentation, and then we'll get into, it's going to be on unfinished because Alderman Warman has to. But yes, we consent to this development. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so we could just move on to the next or the beginning of the slide. I'm going to speak a lot less here because we've got the developer, and he's going to carry most of this presentation. But I will say, it's good news, we almost had three of them today, so we got two. But this is kind of a very interesting contrast to the one that we just talked about. This is the well-known Galena Hotel at one sixteen West Galena Boulevard. Fernando was here, Barbera. Let's just keep going. Again, another fascinating story here. This was the, this property is, really has some very historic roots in this city. It was owned by one of the founders of Aurora, one of the cousins of one of the founders. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. And it was a continuous rooming house. It was pretty, in pretty poor condition for a long time. But it was open, you know, the, the longest continuous running hotel in Aurora. Unfortunately, in twenty twenty, because of the condition of the hotel, it was closed. And that's the time that Fernando bought it. Now, it's interesting, I just want to make a comment. This is the kind of property that sometimes we come to you and we buy. We don't want to buy it, but we worry that if somebody not like Fernando buys it, then it's just going to sit or it's not going to be what it could be. And luckily for us, Fernando and his team purchased the property a couple of years ago. And, and he bought it without any commitments from the city, not knowing what the city could do. Let's keep going over here. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Fernando and then kind of wrap up when we're done here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Fernando Barrera. I'm the founder and owner of the Barrera Organization. My company specializes in buying distressed, distressed income-producing property, right? As you might know, this is a little bit different from the purchases that I tend to purchase. So a little bit about me, I'm an Aurora native, born and raised in Aurora, grew up on the east side of Aurora, still live on the east side of Aurora, graduated from Aurora Central Catholic in twenty fifteen, went to Benedictine University in twenty nineteen with an accounting and finance degree, right? I worked in corporate account, accounting for two years. Two years into working to corporate accounting, I, I got a, I got a little bug that just set in me, you know, real estate is what you got to do. So I ideally stepped away from corporate accounting and ventured on my own to start this new business, buying real estate, right? So after, you know, a few months into it, you know, not a lot of activity, as you might know, right, as being a small business owner, I ended up just, you know, going all out and, and, you know, buying property where I know the market best, in an area that I grew up with in, right? So I, I was very familiar with, with the area, I knew what to look for, I had family in the construction business. So I, you know, growing up, I knew what to look for, I knew how to tell if a foundation was bad, how to tell if, if there were structural issues. And most, most, most likely not the numbers, right? So in real estate, what's important is the numbers, making sure everything makes sense, right? So an opportunity came by to purchase the Galena Hotel. At first, I'm going to, I'm not going to lie to you, before I even went on the market, I got in touch with the owner as soon as I heard it was closed in twenty twenty. And I made several attempts to, to get in touch with them and let them know, you know, what their plans were, as I had, you know, found out that it was closed for various code violations. But, you know, that didn't really scare me away, as most of the real estate that I buy are in the same state, or if not worse, right? So you would imagine that this would be a little bit worse because of the age, right? It's one of the oldest buildings in downtown Aurora, right? So, you know, at, just after a year of going back and forth, communication and being there, I ended up, you know, purchasing the property without, you know, as Mr. Debo mentioned, without really knowing what to do with it. There were several thoughts that came, you know, meeting with several consultants on whether I want to do a boutique hotel, whether I want to do apartments. But ideally, you know, I'm in the apartment world, so I figured that's something that I knew best and knew that I could be successful at. So the, a year and a half after purchasing the property, I, I didn't know what, when I didn't know what exactly what to do with it, but I figured I'd get the right team to help me figure out a great plan for it. So I surrounded myself with historic tax credit consultants, which is here today, John Kramer. I surrounded myself with a great architect, Burt Andrews, which is here today. I surrounded myself with a good account, accounting and finance advisor, Jeff Dow. And together, we put up a proposal that, that, and a project that ideally would be a game changer for Aurora, right? So we have a lot of folks, what really bothers me is we have a lot of folks coming in that aren't from Aurora, get off eighty-eight, come down Lake Street, and the first thing they see, right, right now is an empty building that's boarded up. That gives a really bad look, in my opinion, to the city, which I know that, that's not the city that I grew up in, right? And I know, once we fix it up, we get some folks in there, there's going to be discretionary income going into the restaurants, to the bars, to the Paramount Theater. It would be a great development. And lastly, I brought along a G C that I knew I could trust, somebody that has experience and more or not has done higher projects than this, so he can help me on things that, even though I may have little construction management experience, somebody that has more than I do. So if pickups arise or, you know, things come up, he's there to kind of be a little bit under my wing, but also tag team with me on this project. So that being said, I want to bring up the architect, Burt Andrews, and kind of give you guys, you know, feel comfortable and understand their background and the project that they have done in Aurora, as long as, you know, some of the projects done in Aurora and their background.
Burt Andrews, principal architect with Larson Darby Group Architects and Engineers. This will be our third multifamily project using historic tax credits in Aurora. We were architects for Urban Equities on the Keystone Building and the Terminal Building here in downtown. So we, we're familiar with the city and the process here. And we're really looking forward to working on this building. This will be the oldest building we've worked on, converting it to multifamily, so. Do we have more slides?
John Kramer is the historic tax credit consultant on the project. So you guys might, might recognize him as he's also done projects here in Aurora.
Good evening. My name is John Kramer from Ramsey Historic Consultants. As Fernando said, I've, I've had some experience working in Aurora. We worked on the historic tax credit funded rehab for Copley Hospital for Bloomhaven, also the St. Charles Hospital, which is now the Aurora, Aurora St. Charles Senior Living. Two very large projects, so this one is smaller. But as Fernando said, and as you guys know, it's the, one of the oldest buildings in town. And so it's going to have its own complexities when it comes to applying for historic tax credits. We have already spoken with the, the Illinois Shipos Historic Tax Credit Reviewer, Darius Brika. He has, we've done some meetings with him. And overall, he's very supportive of the project and what we have planned for the building. And we will be submitting for federal historic tax credits in the coming weeks. And then after that, we'll be ideally okayed for the, the River Edge Illinois State Historic Tax Credit as well.
And lastly, I just want to bring up, I don't, we don't want to bore you guys to death, but Torres, Jesus Torres, he will be the one that will be the G C.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jesus Torres, founder and president of Torres Construction. Just to kind of give a little brief overview of myself, I went to Western Illinois University, studied construction management. Right after that, I kind of got right into the weeds, worked for one of the largest builders in the nation in Lennar Homes, is where I grasped a lot of my experience from managing a project, The Brook on Janes, down in Bolingbrook, Illinois, that consisted of eight apartment buildings, thirty-two units in each, total of thirty, two hundred eighty-eight homes, apartment homes there. So the complexity of kind of what, what I can do and what I can handle in regards to the Galena redevelopment, I feel like I have the experience now through the last ten-plus years to be able to oversee the budget, the scheduling, any arising potential exposure, as we've had a couple of meetings here with Mr. Curley, Debo, in regards to trying to outline any potential exposure that we could encounter. And we're kind of going through the development stages of, of kind of construction, constructing more thorough drawings to, to evaluate that and be able to gather all that information and be able to see this project through completion and also be able to provide the city of Aurora with an affordable rate for future residents on this project. Thanks.
So the plan, the, the plan is to preserve the building, the architectural integrity of the building. As you guys know, it's shuttered at the moment, increase the number of residents downtown. And this will be market rate, but affordable, right, at the price point of base rent of a thousand fifty. So these are the existing conditions currently at the moment. You know, it's, I must say, it's a little cleaner now as we did a lot of cleaning. But you guys can get an overview of, you know, it used to be a lodging house, so they would rent by rooms. So this is what we're proposing, this is the plan, microunit. So the sizes will range from two hundred and sixty to six hundred and fifty square feet. Majority of them will have open concept layouts. They will have Murphy beds, as you can see in this rendering, it has the bed pulled out. It will have a built-in storage, compact kitchens, fold-down desks. Now, this next rendering here has the couch, right? So this will be included in, in the rent, and will be included with the unit, I should say. So, you know, minimalist design elements, this is kind of what we envision. Here's my performer showing the rents, showing our expenses, right, showing our debt service, showing our cash flow, and as, you could see, it's very modest returns. Here on the, and then one of my slides here, my sources and uses will show the, the complex capital stack for this project, right? So my building acquisition of a hundred and fifty, fifty thousand of my carrying costs for the past year and a half, the historic tax credits that will help be a part of this that will be a big key to make this development work, the construction loan, I will be using a local lender that ha, I do have a letter of intent from Providence Bank, and they are fully committed to seeing this project. um, and they are fully committed to, uh, seeing this project come into fruition. Um, the developer fee, I, to make the numbers work, I will be, um, receiving a developer fee, but essentially putting it back into the project, um, I have to do this in order to make the numbers work. So as you guys can see from the performer and from, you know, um, all the sweat equity that I have to put in to make this work, right? Uh, and ideally, an extra contribution of five hundred thousand on my end as owner equity. So, um, ideally, the gap would be, uh, one point three, uh, in order to make this project, um, come to light.
Okay, we could, uh, wrap up, I just wanna make a couple of closing comments, I don't know if there was any other slides there, but, um, this building is very small, it's under ten thousand feet, so the buildable area is closer to sixty-five hundred square feet, and that's why the cost is, even, you know, they mentioned about the urban equity properties, was substantially larger, and that makes the cost per square foot just prohibited. Now, thank goodness for the two tax credits we got, it brings it back toward the reasonable range. Fernando and his group is gonna put about a million and a half dollars into the property, and then our gap is about a million three. So I, I, I know it's been a long night, I'm gonna just open it up if anybody's got any questions.
Now, can you go back to the original picture you had on there with the years that this property existed and the updates, I believe it was the first or second slide?
Let's go, Alex, or, or Fernando, you controlling it, if you just go to.
Or that one.
This one?
Yep, that's the one. So eighteen seventy-two. Beautiful.
We wanted to say Lincoln slept here, but the Historic Society wouldn't let us.
Well, the rumor was that Abraham Lincoln did stay there, we just can't find the documents as of yet, but we didn't make this up. Before we get started, I want to, Franco, one, Alderman Franco, or Chairman of the Finance Committee, one more time, why did you guys pass this out of the Finance Committee?
Well, it, it's, it's a nice, uh, difference, a nice diverse type of, um, apartment complex. It's market rate, but yet it's small enough to make the rates affordable for people. So while it's not affordable housing, it's affordable based on the size of that, and there's a number of people, if you look at Chicago, this is doing very well, the micro apartments. So, you know, what we got going on in Aurora now is we have some affordable housing down there, we have market rate, and now we have a new type, which is really, it gives people a choice of what to do down there, so I think this is a great idea. I think the more diverse we can get in our, um, apartments or condos, or whatever we're gonna do downtown, is a wonderful idea, and this is just another example of the diversity, it gives people choices when they come downtown.
And let me say, before I take questions from the Alderman, uh, on this particular item, the reality is, if we want to save any of the historical buildings in the city of Aurora, especially one like this, that's the oldest building in our city, probably one of the oldest buildings in the entire state of Illinois, you know, i- it's gonna take some doing, it's gonna take some investment. Um, you know, we could've easily said, look, this isn't worth it, let's knock this down, but it's already on the historical registry, you know, i- is part of, you know, uh, the history of our city. This is one that once, that once we put back online, you know, is gonna win awards and make history, is something that finally is being utilized to its fullest potential. Now, whether Abraham Lincoln stayed there or not, this building clearly has vast and deep history in the city of Aurora. So, you know, the plaque that'll go on that will, will have that year circa eighteen seventy-two when this thing was built, and I'm sure, you know, even though we've had some Aldermen on City Council, you know, almost forty years, you wasn't around back to with this. You was at the. So, you know, I, I don't know if Jill Morgan is here, but, you know, I'm sure, you know, she and anyone that, that works in, in our apartment that deals with the history of the city of Aurora will be proud that we're trying to maintain this particular building and keep some of the charm that we know to have been Aurora, you know, well over, well over a hundred years ago. Um, so this, this is a great opportunity for us to, to maintain the history of our city in a hundred and eighty-five years. Questions from my right. Uh, Alderman Denell.
Uh, Mayor, I just wanna echo your comments, uh, this is a charming building and, and part of the fabric of our downtown, um, I think that's a big, a big draw for our downtown, our architecture, what people come down here to look at, they don't come down here to look at new buildings, uh, it's kinda like Galena, they don't go to Galena to look at new buildings. So, a, a building like this, um, and with the historic tax credits that we have to help us get this project done, and, um, you know, the, the River Edge tax credit zones from the state, we have a lot of things working for us here to save this building, and I'm, I'm glad we're doing it. I'll be voting yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Who was at the ribbon cutting? It was originally built.
I just, uh, I just wanted to say that, um, before we have the existing surrounding four-block area that we see today, uh, where the vacant land is and parking lot and the like, that was filled with buildings up and down, on, on, uh, River Street and Galena and Lake Street, and over the years, the bank, Old Second Bank, bought up all those buildings for their eventual expansions of the drive-up facility and the building expansion itself, and put it in a parking lot. But the city councils of the past never approved this building to be part of that, because they wanted to save it for something special, uh, and they took a calculated risk to do that, and, um, over the years, um, we haven't seen the best times emanating from that building, uh, but there was a goal in mind, uh, which is to redevelop it and save it, uh, for our downtown and for our community, and the time has come. And you and your team, uh, should be honored and, um, thanked in the community for doing what we've wanted for city council after city council after city council, and the community has wanted, to save this historic building. So I think that the time has come to do something, uh, special. Uh, I like the creative way that you've been able to use all the different, uh, means at your disposal to have this come about, so I'll be voting in favor of this.
Thank you.
And, you know, before we, I ask any of the other Aldermen, you know, what we didn't see is, you took up, there's gonna be an elevator added to this, as well as an additional staircase, I, I don't know if we saw that picture.
Correct, so ideally, it, the unit count would've been affected significantly if I would've done it inside, so with the help of, uh, my historic tax credit consultant, John Kramer, we managed, um, to work something out with, with Shipbo to have an exterior elevator, so it's, there will be a build-out for exterior elevator and an exterior staircase, uh, for accessibility.
Any other questions from, from the left? Alderman, Alderman Lesh.
Sure, I, um, I know you talked about parking during the Finance Committee meeting, and it seemed somewhat unresolved, so have we come towards any sort of resolution on that, uh, as, as a concrete plan for this unit with, I think it's twenty, twenty-some units?
Twenty-one units, correct. So, we would really like to sit down with Old Second, um, we'll admit, there's nothing in place yet, right, but I have been working with Old Second, we've been touching base on some site work that we did, um, and hoped, uh, sit down with Mr. Devo, uh, sit down with Old Second, see if we could work something out, but i- it's also my understanding that out of downtown, right, um, there's not much parking, it's a lot of public parking, right? But ideally, I would really love, uh, to sit down with Old Second and see if we can work something out, um, because ideally, if we have residents there, wanna make sure they're going out for groceries, especially in the wintertime, that, that, you know, they're parking close to the building, right? So it, right now, public parking's a little bit of a stretch, but, um, that's something that, uh, it's an important item that I would like to get addressed as well.
And, and just so we're on the same page, Old Second owns the parking lot immediately to the east and across the alley from this building, one that they only use, uh, during the day for parking for, for their office hours at the bank.
And we, we have been speaking to Old Second about the, the parking, as well as our own parking lots that we own.
And then, um, other, other potential problems, I mean, you, you saw the theme, tend to run into problems along the way, what have you done to, so you, I, I know, so you're good at looking at foundations, um, I'm, I'm just curious if you've had an engineering study or, uh, complete look at this whole building to get, to get a really good analysis of potential problems?
Correct. I must say, I must say though, even though it's.
Asbestos or anything else?
Very, yeah, correct, so it's a very old building, right? But they just don't make them as they used to, right? Burt and I, uh, we scanned the building, right, uh, we're confident that the structure is in, in well shape, right? We, when we walked it, we did the scanning, we're confident that, you know, when we start going in for demo, um, we won't really find much surprises, um, at all, right? But ideally, we did budget in, we, we did budget that in, uh, for, um, you know, asbestos behind the wall, since it is an older building, um, and other factors that might come into play.
Mr. Curley, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, evening, Council. Um, we have, uh, Burt, uh, from Larson Darby, has been involved in several, several projects here with us, has, uh, their firm has extensive knowledge in helping us through projects like this, as has city staff. Uh, this will not have, um, the remediation or the tunnel, uh, questions come up like we did, which would be unforeseen problems like the last project we talked about. Um, this project would be, uh, almost entirely structural issues, if there were any structural issues. The building happens to be a heavy timber, uh, building, uh, with the structure itself, and those are readily repairable, uh, when you do find, uh, problems. During the demolition, if there were any issues, I would suggest it's possible we might run into some structural issues, but they should be remediate, they should be relatively easily remediated with heavy timber, uh, repairs.
Thank you. Now, just two more real brief questions, one maybe for Mr. Minnick, the, the financing I heard that it was in the TIF district for the Hobbs, um, is, is this one point three million coming out of that, uh, TIF? Uh, cause I, it's my understanding that the majority of that was used up in the Hobbs project.
Um, yeah, uh, the, um, the forgivable loan and, and the, uh, the initial outlay would, uh, be probably coming out of the, uh, gaming tax fund, and then it would be repaid over time.
Okay, and my last question was about the, sort of, that you said that there, uh, prior for the developers, that, um, uh, you know, that this is sort of a new concept, but then somebody else said that this is being done in Chicago, uh, for these postage-stamp-sized, um, apartments. Has there been any market analysis of their success rate? It's, I mean, it's still a pretty penny for a, a small, small area.
Right, so ideally, what, what I did, my analysis that I did is based on the portfolio that I own, and majority of the portfolio that I own is in the surrounding neighborhood within half a mile radius, right? So, um, my portfolio consists of studios and one-bedroom units, uh, which I have, which my demand is there, um, and sometimes, sometimes folks, you know, I get, you know, multiple calls for folks saying, do you have anything downtown that's affordable, or like twelve, under twelve hundred dollars, right? So, uh, you know, that's kind of how the concept came into play, because, you know, everybody's asking, wants to live downtown, the convenience of going to the restaurants, going to the bars, going to the Paramount, but ideally, it's, you know, some of the rents that are starting are thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred, right? And some of the, you know, newer developments that are gonna come to light, right, are up there, right? So bringing this concept to downtown, I feel, is a great idea, uh, based on the analysis and, uh, based on my own experience, right? So, um, that's kind of how the concept came into play.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have, uh, we will also include in the packet, um, some studies about other cities and how these microunits work.
Any other questions? All right, put this on unfinished, and we can have Alderman Warman come back in.
And Mr. Mayor, um, that concludes the Finance Committee Report.
Thank you very much. Chairman Seville, can you give the, and does the record reflect that Alderman Warman has returned to the council chambers? Chairman Seville, can you give the Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee met on September tenth, twenty twenty-four, and review the following item, twenty-four dash zero six seven three, a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-four King County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, this is something we've been participating in since two thousand and three, uh, it's updated every five years, um, this is the natural disaster plan, we've taken into account now for the first time, climate change, uh, and, um, this is really, hopefully, grant monies for pre or post mitigation, which is a funding goal, um, and, um, hopefully, we can do these, uh, we have to complete each project within the time, the five-year, uh, period, and both Natalie and, and Mia is here to answer any questions, or you have any presentation you'd like to give?
Thank you, Alderman Seville. Again, Natalie Weisa, Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of Aurora. I'm not gonna go through with a formal presentation tonight, but we here, are here to answer any comments or questions, and also, I believe still in the audience is Mr. Cantroth, who can help with the public board discussion, discussions, if you have anything directed at specific mitigation actions at the back of the plan.
Do you wanna introduce your new, uh, person that joined your team?
Yes, so also with me tonight is Ms. Mia Jurese, and she is actually fulfilling, she was hired this year, and she fulfilled one of those mitigation action plans, she is an emergency management specialist in resiliency, so she covers mitigation, recovery, and climate change.
Sounds great, go ahead.
Natalie covered it.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate it, no objections, item of consent.
Consent.
And that's the report from PHS and Team Mayor.
Thank you very much, uh, Chairwoman Wanda Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we met on, uh, September ninth, and the only item we have is twenty-four dash oh six four four, a resolution to approve an agreement to maintain a storm sur between the city of Aurora and King County Forest Preserve.
No objections, item of consent.
And that's so, Mayor, we conclude the meeting.
Thank you. Chairman Warman, can you give the Rules Administration Procedure Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Rules Administration and Procedures Committee was scheduled to meet on September third, twenty twenty-four, however, there are no items on the agenda, so therefore, the meeting was canceled.
All right, that concludes our committee report, let's go on to new business. Madam Clerk, you do the first item in our new business.
Twenty-four zero six zero six, an ordinance setting the compensation of the alderpersons for the terms commencing in and after May of twenty twenty-five in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code and the Local Government Officer Compensation Act.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask the clerk to read the second one, and I'll discuss them both in, in together.
Madam Clerk, you read the next item.
Twenty-four zero six zero seven, an ordinance setting the compensation of the mayor to be elected in twenty twenty-five in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code and the Local Government Officer Compensation Act.
So the Finance Committee, um, had met, we do this every four years, as, as everybody knows, is basically vote on compensation for when the terms end, for who's ever in office, now that's how this goes, so this is, this is the third time I've been involved. Finance Committee tackled this, and we had three meetings to talk about compensation for both the Alderman and for the mayor. Um, we used a new tool this time, in the past, we just, we gather our own data, our own materials, and then discuss it based on comparables, what other cities are doing, uh, cost of living, and those types of things. This time, we used Corn Ferry, who, who does this, these type of, uh, compensation reports for whether it'll be elected officials or staff, or things like that, uh, and what we found out from, from Corn Ferry was that over the last two cycles, what we did was pretty good as far as getting mayors and aldermen a compensation to where it should be, like, almost like a, uh, an industry standard. So what we saw from here is that we did a good job with that, but we did have a couple of discrepancies based on what we felt could've been better, you know, compensation for Alderman and mayor. Um, we didn't rely solely on comparables this time, but we, we did a strict Corn Ferry study, um, we used the data, but unfortunately, it's not always apples-apples with regard to things like geographic areas, um, how many Aldermen, our Alderman-at-large versus geographic areas, meetings, stipends, insurance, et cetera. Um, we did take in consideration cost of living in cities, not just in the Chicagoland area, which we've done in the past, but other places in the Midwest, uh, we looked at inflation trends, the workload for our Alderman and mayor, populations, budgets, uh, attraction for elected officials, retention, and things like the other variables. So what we came out with, and I'll start with the mayor first, is that, under the Corn Ferry study, and what we saw is that the mayor's compensation is at or above what basically the, the area calls for. So we felt that the mayor was in a good sweet spot, which we had seen early on, two cycles ago, the mayor's compensation was very low, so we had given him significant, him or her significant increases over the years, to get them to a point where Corn Ferry said, yes, this is a good spot, maybe a little bit higher than average, but pretty good spot for this. So with that in mind, based on them being in a spot we thought was a good spot for this position, we suggested for a four-year period, starting, uh, next term, to be a two-and-a-half percent increase across the board. Two-and-a-half increase across the board is typically a historical standard that we use for our negotiations with various units and that, so that's a standard piece, since the, since that compensation was already pretty close to being where we thought it should be. For the Alderman, um, two cycles ago, we, we first looked at this, we felt the Alderman compensation was also a little bit low at that time, um, but we really didn't increase it as dramatically as we probably should have, based on these studies, to get where we wanna be today, cause our goal is always to be, to get our compensation to the point where just inflationary increases, which is always hard to do, you're always chasing your tail with that, but, you know, we tried to, but we didn't quite get there, according to the studies that we had seen. So, um, what we thought would be appropriate, based on that, is that the first year of the new cycle, to get us kinda where other cities comparables are, you know, with population size, stuff, would be a ten percent increase the first year. Kind, we needed to make that significant state. would be a 10% increase the first year. We needed to make that significant statement because what we were doing before is nickel and diming, and nickel and diming just didn't get us there. So we thought a 10% increase and then 5% for the next three years after. Now, part of that was for the comparables, part of that was for what we had seen with populations and our workload. But part of that was because two, last two years, inflation increased almost 15% anyway, which you, you're always chasing that. So with 15% increase in flate, inflation, we didn't think that 3% to 4% was gonna, we're always gonna be chasing that. So we figured we'd go 10%, 5%, 5 and 5, to get us to that point where hopefully the next cycle, we can go to just the normal cost of living increases. So that's kinda how we came to the numbers that you see out there today, why we thought, you know, one would be 2.5%, one would be 10, 5 and 5, to get us to where it's an appropriate amount and a reasonable amount, it's something that's fair for all of us and also for the taxpayers. So with that said, I, I guess I would entertain any questions from the.
Questions from the Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Yeah, Alderman. Franco, I do have a question for you. So at the time, I guess that's 2027, when the 10% would go in?
For the Alderman, yes.
Doing the math, what would that 10% put us at as far as the salary?
Well, we got it in here. Let's see, we got it. So after the first 10%, we'd be up to $28,146.
So not until 2027, we'd be at $28,000?
Correct. So we are, we're already set in stone for the next few years. We're gonna have a 3, 3, 3 and 5, 5 would be in the last year, and then we go into this 10. You know, when, when we did this 3, 3, 3, 5, we said, oh, that's pretty good. Well, guess where we need to be? It just didn't. So at some point in time, and you hate to make the big splash, you always have to make the big splash and then get yourself to the point where you can pull back a little bit. I think that's how we were looking at it. Cause that, you know, you go, you go 5% on $170,000, it's different than 5% on $23,000. It just doesn't, just doesn't get you where you wanna go. So we were probably looking, based on the comparables, to get us in the low 30s. But you don't, you know, could you go a 20% increase the first year in 2.5, 2.5, 2.5? Yeah, you could. But I think that was kinda dramatic. So I think what we did was as high as we felt comfortable going to still get us to that spot later on. So if, if you'll see the statement here, the last four years will be the 32, 583, which still might be low at that time, but at least it's, we're in the ballpark again. So that's kinda what we were thinking when we did that.
Any other questions from my right? No questions from the left? Alderman Lash?
Not a, not a question, just a statement. I watched both the initial Finance Committee meeting where Corn Ferry presented, and I think what they said was that the Alderman's compensation was at 44th percentile, and the mayor's was actually at the very top, not just top percentile, but the very top 13. We were, we were the highest paid of all of the municipalities. To me, as watching the last Finance Committee meetings, you know, the, the route that Alderman Bog was proposing with a lump sum increase to get us up to the, maybe the 50th or 60th percentile, and then going with a standard 2.5 would, would make the most sense to me. And, and then on, on the mayor's compensation, I would, I'm fine going with a 0% increase over four years.
Well, it'll be a 2.5%.
What I'm saying.
No, that's what he wants.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's what you want. Okay, all right.
And I'm curious what the others think, since you're voting on future pay that may or may not affect you.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment.
Alderman Bear.
Not necessarily on the pay, but coming, just recently coming from the school board, I can tell you guys working a lot harder. When I was on the school board, you know, I think life was a lot simpler for me. Not saying it's not good work, did a lot of good things there. But I can tell you that there's a lot of needs, residents out there, you know, calling or sending emails, and then a lot of requests to attend events, attend meetings. So my hats off to all, all of you here for, for doing that work. It's, it's very intense, and some of these things, there's no quick fix. You don't, don't snap your fingers and it gets fixed. You have to keep at it, keep on it, and sometimes it takes a long time. And I know some of you guys are working on those issues that are probably a couple of years, you know, into it. So just wanted to say, thank you for your service.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah. Alderman Book?
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to, we talked at great lengths about this at Finance. And really, the Corn Ferry study, when they're looking at the numbers, our hands are a little bit tied. Of course, we always look in Illinois first. What are our other cities in Illinois doing? And the state of Illinois, population-wise, over 151,000 people, there are no cities between 151 and 2.7 million other than Aurora. We're the only one. So when you started to do comparisons, at least by city size, in the state, there, there's not a comparison. So we looked at Midwest cities, very comparable. We tried to look at number of council members, you know, their makeup, are they in districts? Some people call them districts, of course. We call them wards. And we were trying to find cities very similar. The one that I, in my research, or one that I found was almost exactly the same. I mean, the makeup, they have 13 council members, tenor wards, three at large. I mean, almost a mirror of our situation here. Population size of the city is 190,000. We know, we know we're above 190,000. Don't care what the census says. So that city is Akron, Ohio. Their pay rate right now in 2024 is 34.7. And I went back after that and looked at, as Alderman Franco said, cost of living adjustment, they're about 7% less than the Aurora Naperville area. So in the numbers, we tried to make what I call a bump, an immediate bump, to try and get us closer to where we should be, to put us at least in line with other cities our comparable size. Grand Rapids, which is 198,000, they're at about 33 right now. Next year, they'll be at 30, or they're at 32.5 now, they'll be at 33.5 next year. Des Moines, which is 214,000 people, they're at 35 right now. So this is kinda what we came up with in trying to get there. Some might say we're not getting there fast enough, and I'll leave that up to other council members to decide. But that's, those are raw data numbers. What's happening in the Midwest with city councils, our size.
All right. So are we putting this on finished or unfinished?
Unfinished on both.
Unfinished. Yeah, both of them. Alderman Siakel said. All right. So let's go on to the next item under new business. Madam Clerk, read the resolution.
24-0648, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to sign a three-year service agreement with Central Square Payments for credit and debit card payment processing via Paya Connect.
No objections. I'm going consent. I'm sorry, did you wanna give a presentation?
I don't need to if everyone's reviewed the item.
All right, you can give a quick, just a brief presentation on what we're doing.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lisa Zapata, Revenue Collections Manager. The last item you're looking at tonight is a contract for Navoline, which is our ERP system, in which we would like to start using Navoline's Paya Connect, which will allow us to have seamless credit card transactions. We've experienced some issues over the past few years when it comes to credit card processing, and that's due to the third-party credit card processor that we're using. It's a loose integration, and we're looking to make that a tight integration with, with Navoline.
And just so we're clear, some of the problems were double payments and things like, tell them what the problem was.
Duplicate payments are an issue. We've had batches that just don't settle in the credit card terminal, terminals themselves. Core processor, cores servers have gone down, and it just, it causes problems when it comes to credit card payments.
Any questions based on that? There being none? No objections. Item gone consent. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes new business. Let's go on to number seven on the agenda. Alderman's Corner Ward Eight. I know, well, we got Alderman's Ward Eight, Patty Smith. I'm happy to, I'm happy to, Patty Smith. Tell you what, let's do, Alderman Smith has, based on the fact that we've been here for a while, has elected to do her Alderman's Corner at the next meeting for Alderman's Corner. And we'll look. Right, right, right. She, she wants to make sure that everybody, we have everybody's full attention. Now, we're always gonna have a whole lot going on, Patty Smith, cause we got stuff. Are you ready? But she ready. All right, all right. Tell you what, we'll hold that Alderman's Corner. Thank you there for letting us out a little bit early. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? There's been a motion by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.